To order.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Doro.
Your trusty Myers.
Here.
Trustee Landberg.
Here.
Trustee Swenson.
Here.
Trustee Waschiger.
Your president Fannerstall.
Here. At this time, everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Waschiger.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we will have the swearing in of our newest police officer, Dylan Gergel.
If you would raise your right hand, please, for me, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dylan Gergel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply.
That I will support and comply.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Heartland.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Heartland.
The rules and regulations of the Heartland Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Heartland Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of my office as police officer.
The duties of my office as police officer.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service ahead of time. Welcome again. Is there anything you'd like to say? The microphone is here. I see that we have a lot of people that hopefully they got the recorders and cameras going for your statements, but no, the mic is open for you if you'd like it, or you can yell.
You can sing if you want to.
Your service will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you and welcome to Heartland.
Bring on the cake.
Yeah.
Is there, oh yeah, is there, is that?
There goes our audience.
I was not made aware. I'll make sure to take care of that next time. Yes, I'll take, I'm sorry that I missed the boat on that.
Who's priorities in life, each?
At this time, if anybody from the public, we will open this for public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda? And there does not seem to be any. So we will move on to our first item on the agenda, which is consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes of June 11th, 2018.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payment.
I move we pay the bills for eighty-one five oh eight point forty-two cents.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, we have consideration of actions related to licenses and permits, consideration of applications for operators, bartenders licenses with a term ending June 30th, 2020. There are quite a few names, so I will ask the board if it is okay that I say as listed in the packet that has been opened to the public for. Yes.
That's fine.
All right, at that time, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve licenses.
As listed.
Operator license.
Operator licenses.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bartenders' operators' licenses expiring June 30th, 2020, as listed in the packet that was distributed to the public. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those licenses are granted. The next item we have are related to the hometown celebration. We have a temporary Class B beer wine license. The application is from the Kiwanis of Greater Heartland. The location will be the pavilion area north of the Fine Arts Center in Nixon Park. The event is our hometown celebration. The date is Friday, June 29th, 2018. This also includes temporary operators' licenses for David Cox and Suzanne Thomas.
I so moved. Second.
It has been moved and seconded for the items relating to the hometown celebration. Any discussion?
Does David Cox, does he ever have any? I guess that's you do.
Yeah, I've been thoroughly vetted.
I do believe that the interim police chief and village clerk recommend approval. It has been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried and that all, those also are granted. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the use of Pauling Avenue Municipal Parking Lots for a weekly farmer's market on Sundays until September 23rd or the 30th.
Also move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I guess I'm just going to throw in that with us having the 23rd slash 30th, are we okay to just extend it through the 30th?
That's fine. I will note that in the final materials that Mary did send over, she asked for the 23rd. So you could, if you wanted, leave it for the 23rd. It's up to you.
Okay.
You could just.
So there's not a chance that they're gonna come back for the 30th? I was just thinking if we say through the 30th and they end on the 23rd, would there be any ill advisement on that?
No, I think that's all right.
Okay.
She's authorized.
If you're okay with it, I'd say we just go with the 30th, just in case they all of a sudden are like, wow, we really did, you know. Whatever you suggest.
We just go with the 30th, that'd be fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. And if you could, since you're on the record now, is, will that be on the record? If you could state your name and.
Mary Farwick.
Residence and, or are you representing the farmer's market?
I'm representing farmer's market, yeah.
So we will go through the 30th as long as everybody is fine with that.
That'd be great.
Sundays from ten to one.
Yep. Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, that is a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Sundays ten to one, through September 30th for the farmer's market in the municipal lot as stated. Any other, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda, we have the presentation of the 2017 financial statements and audit results by Wendy Unger, CPA Partner at Baker Tilly.
You should have in front of you this evening a several-page handout. This is what I'll go utilize to go through the information that you should have received in your audited statements ahead of time. This is at a very high level. I will give some page references as we go through, because there's much more detail in your audited booklet. On the first page of the handout, I've summarized the audit results. The objective of the audit was to issue an opinion on the village's financial statements. We've done that. We've issued a clean, unmodified opinion, highest level of assurance that you can obtain from us as your auditors, and that opinion is contained on pages one and two of your audited statements. In addition to the opinion, just to draw a quick reference, there's a portion of the report that's called Management's Discussion and Analysis. That's pages three through 15 of the audited booklet. That's a narrative that's prepared by management of the village and a very high CliffNote summary of what happened at the village for the past year. So again, I encourage you to take a look at that if you just want a quick snapshot. Moving to the next page, this is where I've highlighted the summary financial information. In fact, on the next couple pages, again, gonna go through this at a relatively high level, but please feel free to ask any questions that you may have. The first column there is the general fund. This is your day-to-day operating fund. This can be found on page 70 of your audited statements. The general fund for 2017, it's $7.1 million of actual revenue, compares to a $7.06 million budget. So revenues came in over budget by $47,000. Lots of different pieces to that, but the largest contributors to that were licenses and permits. Your billing permits were over budget by $145,000, and then your public charges for services also had some additional revenues over budget. Your ambulance revenues were higher than anticipated, plus your park and rec revenues were higher than anticipated. Your expenditures were $6.758 million, actual, compares to a $6.724 million budget. So a little bit over budget by $35,000. Again, numerous items that contribute to that, but probably the largest pieces, you budget for contingencies, that was $101,000. You didn't use those monies during '17, so that's the largest portion of that. You also have some other sources and uses. Those were $320,000, and those are monies that move back and forth from the various funds. So there's monies that come in from the general, or into the general fund from other funds, and monies that go out, and we'll talk about those as I move through the rest of the presentation. So for 2017, you added to your general fund fund balance almost $30,000 and had $5.6 million in fund balance as of the end of the year. If you look at the bottom portion of that, there's four different components to that fund balance. There's 1.5 million, which is referred to as non-spendable. Those are monies that have been earmarked for currently to cover the deficits that are in the TIFs. There's another portion that's restricted, 14 million. That's Act 102 money. Those are EMS monies. Those are restricted by the nature of the program and can only be spent on that program. You have 1.48 million of assigned, and those are made up of various pieces. Much more detail on page 58, but your largest pieces of that are your employee benefits and future asset purchases. Those are the largest pieces. The remaining balance, the residual after taking those three figures away, is 2.57 million. That's your unassigned fund balance. Those are your working capital contingencies-type monies. You do have a policy that your unassigned balance needs to be in excess of 25%. That 2.5 million is approximately 36%. So you're in compliance with the policy of the village. Moving to the next three columns, those are on 71 through 73 of your audited statements. Yes?
I just wanna, you had said restricted, under fund balance consist of, under restricted, and I'm just, I'm making sure on this.
Sure.
But I think I know the answer, but you had said 14 million.
Oh, I'm sorry. 14,000.
You meant 14,000. I'm just making sure for the.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, $14,806 of restricted.
Thank you. Thank you. Just wanted to correct that for anybody watching that doesn't have this in front of them.
Sure, not a problem. The next three columns, as I noted, are the three TIF funds. Again, pages 71 through 73 shows a budget-to-actual comparison. All three are currently operating at deficits, and those all fluctuate as you move forward through the life of those TIFs. The last column on this page is the debt service fund. 1.2 million of revenue, that's all tax, or mostly tax revenue. So you levy taxes to make the principal and interest payments on village debt. The 1.26 million is the PNI, or the principal and interest cost for 2017. You also borrowed during 2017, so keep in mind approximately 6.12 million you borrowed, and there's various pieces of that. Some was to refund old debt, some went into your capital project fund. But if you note underneath that $55,000 decrease, you'll see that 2.28 million. That's that, the proceeds coming in of the 2.2 million that will be used to pay off the 2009 debt. That happened in 2018. So you'll notice that that fund balance looks very large as of the end of the year, but that's really because those monies are sitting there until the debt was paid in February of 2018. So just a timing issue. Turning to the next page, I continue with the remaining governmental funds of the village. The capital project, the village projects fund, that can be found on page 23. That fund had $118,000 of revenue. A good portion of that is a DNR grant that was applied for several years ago and was received during 2017. Additional revenues are interest income that was earned on cash on hand. Expenditures were 1.4 million in that fund. Most of that is road projects. You did some catch basin work, some sidewalk and curb repairs, some cracked ceiling and patching, some more work-related activity in that fund. You had 3.4 million of other sources. Again, 3.4 million of that is new debt. So of that 6.12 I mentioned, 3.4 came into your capital project, village project fund. The fund balance in that fund was 4.9 million as of the end of the year. Similar to the previous page, if you go down, there's 3.6 million restricted. Again, those are borrowed monies that have yet to be spent, so those are restricted for the purpose for which they were borrowed. The remaining portion, 1.3 million, is assigned, and that is also detailed out on page 58, the various purposes of that money. The next column, again, on page 23 of your financial statements, is your capital projects, corporate reserve. Had a little bit of income during the year, but you spent 1.3 million during the year. The largest piece of that is the ladder truck, a little bit over $1 million that was bought during 2017. There was also some DPW, various pieces of equipment to the figure of 202,000. Again, 1.3 million of other sources. 700,000 of that is new debt. And then, as I noted previously when we spoke about the general fund, 552,000 came in from the general fund to help pay for some of the costs in this fund. So again, that's one of those transfers. This fund essentially broke even, added a little bit, 5,000 to fund balance, and had 1.38 million as of the end of the year, and all those monies are assigned and again laid out on page 58. The final column on this page is what's titled as non-major funds. These can be found on page 78 through 79 of your audited statements. The largest piece of this, again, not gonna go into great detail, but the largest portion of this is your refuse and garbage fund. So $416,000 of that revenue is from that program. 500,000 of expenses in total, of which 389,000 relates, again, to the refuse and garbage program. So overall, those funds added 85,000 to fund balance and had 533,000 of fund balance as of the end of the year. Down below, 415 of that is restricted. That's library money and impact fees. Again, they're restricted by the nature of what they are legally restricted. You have 132,000 that's committed. 102,000 is the fund balance in your refuse and garbage. The remaining balance of 30,000 is the crime, the Criminal Investigation Task Force Fund. The $13,000 of deficit is in the capital project developers' fund. Turning to the next page, the remaining three funds of the village, these are more business-type operations, so they get presented a little bit different. The water utility for the year, 672,000 of income that was added to net position. That compares to a $1.6 million addition last year. One thing to keep in mind, during 2016, there were capital contributions, so additional developer contributions, and that was the Riverwalk and Windrush and the Sanctuary. During 2017, there were also capital contributions. They just weren't to the magnitude of the previous year, and that was the Four Winds development. So again, both years had capital contributions, but 2016 had much more significant. Also in the water utility, charges to customers are up about 420,000, so a good increase in your revenue based on your 30% rate increase and then some additional industrial customer growth in that area. Overall, as again, as I mentioned, 672,000 added to net position, had 12.1 million of net position. The previous funds I spoke about follow a different, again, a different accounting methodology, so fund balance is very close, is much closer to cash than net position is. Net position includes all your infrastructure, all your towers, your meters, your pipe in the ground, so a much larger balance. But of that 12.1 million, 1.6 million is cash. Sewer utility, similar to the water, had an increase in net position of 763,000. That compares to a $1.2 million increase last year, and again, those capital contributions are a significant portion of that addition. Had 7.6 million of net position as of the end of the year, and 1.84 million of that is cash. And all the cash in both the water and the sewer utility are, is unrestricted. The last column is the internal service fund. This is your dental program. Had 57,000 of revenue, 53,000 of expenses, and added a little bit to net position and had 177,000 as of the end of the year, and all of that is cash. Turning to the next page, just a couple bullet points I just want to quickly mention. The long-term obligations of the village are laid out here by both governmental and business-type. So when we talk about governmental, those were those, the village funds at the beginning of the presentation. The 4.3 million of business-type, that's your water and sewer funds. They total have $20.7 million of general obligation debt outstanding. You can see in that second bullet point, the village has capacity to, or the ability to borrow 5% of its equalized value, which is approximately 64.4 million. You had 20 million, 20.7 million outstanding, so the difference between those two is your capacity or your ability to borrow, which equates to roughly 44 million. Keep in mind, again, you borrowed that 6 million in 2017. You didn't pay off the 2.2 million of the old debt until '18, so that number's a little bit inflated for as of the end of the year. Lastly, on the final page of the presentation, the top portion, as part of the audit process, we do issue a communication to those charged with governance. That document allows us to communicate comments and recommendations that we may have, also allows us to have some of our standard and customary communication that we need to have with you as the board. Nothing new to report in there this year. Very similar to the previous year, there's some informational points in there that talk about different risks and that governmental entities face. Just encourage you to take a look at those at your leisure. The last portion of it, the portion that is ours, where we do communicate our requirements, nothing unusual in there either. Things were very similar to the previous year, so nothing new to add in that section. I have on that last page also included my phone number and my email. I go through this very quickly and at a very high level, but happy to talk through any of this information with any of you in more detail if you would like to do that. But again, at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I got a question. Hey, that's our long-term debt is 20 million, right?
Your general obligation debt, yes. General obligation.
Is that how much we owe as a community?
Yes, as of 12/31, so that's a snapshot. Yep, that's a snapshot.
And then we, if we wanted to borrow any money, we could borrow $64,000.
No.
Thirty, sixty-four million.
You can only borrow the difference between those two.
Down five.
Yep. So you have 64 million that you can borrow. You already borrowed 20 million, so you have the capacity to borrow an additional 44 million.
Forty-four, so that's.
Correct. It's the difference between those two.
I don't care to borrow, but I just, every year I ask about how much.
I understand. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next items are items that were referred from the June 18 Plan Commission meeting. First, we have consideration of actions related to a proposed plan unit development amendment for the Riverwalk development to allow not less than 3,000 square feet commercial space and up to six residential units or up to full commercial use in the mixed-use building, building three of the Riverwalk development. So first, we will open the public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this time for anybody that would want to speak involving this consideration of actions, if there's anybody that would like to speak. Anybody on the board want to speak?
Do you want me to outline anything at all, or do that now, do that later, do that never?
You can do it during the public, yeah, sure. Why, I mean, we'll just leave the public hearing open, because sometimes people end up saying, oh, wait a minute, I want to say something, so go ahead.
So let me just remind everybody that this is an amendment to the Riverwalk, PUD. The Riverwalk, of course, is the mixed-use development on East Capitol Drive in the downtown. It includes the two residential buildings and then a mixed-use building right up against East Capitol. The conversation tonight is focused on that building number three, or the building on East Capitol Drive. Request came in to amend the PUD to allow full commercial in that building. Additionally, at the same time, we're sort of cleaning up some loose ends that existed in the, in the building, and at the same time, considered whether it was acceptable to allow up to five residential units on the second floor and a sixth residential unit on the first floor, which is contrary to what the PUD originally allowed, which was three units on the second floor and full commercial only on the first floor. Nonetheless, Plan Commission reviewed the proposal at its two meetings and ended up recommending approval to the village board of the language, as President Fannerstall basically described. They recommended approval of amendment number two, which outlines not only the changes that we discussed, that is, not less than 3,000 square feet of commercial and up to six residential units in the building, five on the second floor, one on the first floor, if in fact it is not used for commercial. It also recommended, that is, the Plan Commission also recommended that if it is converted back to, if it is not commercial, that it should be converted back to residential unless the village agrees to extend or waive that requirement. And lastly, it just made some clean, house cleaning changes to the overall total. There are 74, rather, moved to 80 potential residential units in the area as opposed to the original 77. So basically, that is the totality of the changes. It brings that development up to date and authorizes those requests.
Now, in other words, now with the way this new proposal, there'll be no small businesses in the, facing Capitol Drive. He's gonna take over that whole down floor, right?
There is a, there is a potential tenant that would take over the entire building commercially, but it would remain in the future if, at changes in conditions, changes in economics, if different types or different groups of commercial wanted to go in the building, that still could be done. It just needs to be reconfigured.
But if we go along with what he wants now, he'll take that whole building?
Correct. The entire building would be occupied.
So everybody understands that. And then if it doesn't work out, or he doesn't use it all, after the length of time that you have, it would revert back without going through a lot of problems?
Correct.
Yeah, revert back to what it originally was with the stores or whatever.
Right.
Right.
So to be known apartments upstairs and.
Under the current configure, under the currently proposed configuration, no. The current tenant, no, there wouldn't be, although the, the authorization that the village is considering right now would allow that to happen if in the future.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
The owner of the building wanted to convert it back.
Yeah.
I have a question regarding the applications, because I had a hard time reading them. I see the one from Joe McCormick on 4/30 and another on 4/30. Who did this come from? Who filled this application out? The one that's typed.
The one that is typed.
It's dated 4/30/18.
It comes from the, from the, it's written by the lessee on behalf of the owner.
So who sent, who filled this out and sent it to us?
I imagine it came from the lessee on behalf of the owner, so I think it physically came from the potential lessee.
Who is?
Who is Keller Williams.
Okay.
Real estate. And the owner then made his petition as well.
I did, because there was three of them in here, and I, one was really nice and typed, and I was just wondering who actually completed that and sent it in.
That was probably, like I said, it was Keller Williams, probably done online, because it's form fillable online. I'm gonna guess that's how you actually did it.
And it had a different name, I was just wondering. Thank you.
So with some of that also, there's actually two items you'll see in there, and just as we talked about last meeting, because we, I believe we talked about, yeah, we talked about it at a village board meeting, but we also talked about it at a Plan Commission meeting, so the way, there's some things that need to be cleaned up, because the original way that it was supposed to be built was three room, three units upstairs, like two-bedroom units, correct me if I'm wrong, three units upstairs, and it was gonna be all commercial downstairs. Then there was a change made in the plans, not necessarily, it was addressed to the village, but it wasn't voted on and stuff like that. But now there's five units upstairs residential and one unit of residential downstairs with the rest of the floor space, a very small residential downstairs, I think it's approximately 500 square feet, with the rest of the floor space being commercial. We are, as a village standpoint and for the board, I mean, I can say I am addressing or attempting to address that situation. or attempting to address that situation. The village staff is, and people involved with it are letting me know, you know, whatever happened, so we don't run into that accident again. At the same time, I've heard from, you know, the developer that built it and why they went forward with it in that fashion, they had turned in plans, et cetera, et cetera. So we're kind of cleaning up two different things. One of them is Keller Williams coming into the building and whether or not that's a good idea for the village, for Keller Williams to take that over, as they kind of put a hub here in Heartland and in Lake Country. And they've given a long explanation on the fact that they have, I mean, offices all over the world and especially all over the United States. But the biggest question for Heartland is originally this was sold to the people that there was going to be something more, I'm going to call it, this isn't taken away from Keller Williams, I'm just coming up with lack of words here, but a more active nighttime place, as people were thinking, or retail, which doesn't seem like nighttime, that'd be daytime, but it was sold a little more like it might end up being a bar, restaurant, or let's call it boutique, something like that. Where also in talking with McCormick and being at the Plan Commission meetings, I originally was opposed to this. I said it wasn't how it was sold to the people, but for myself, you know, there hasn't been many bites, notwithstanding that it may not have been advertised the best or how that does, either or, there hasn't been a lot of bites to put something in there. And we have someone who is currently in the Heartland Station Building that wants to make a home in Heartland, if I'm not mistaken. I believe we have some of the, but they came and spoke at the Plan Commission meeting and they want to make a home here. There may be a small title company in there, there will be agents coming in and out, they may be using it for training facilities. The largest problem that we're running into is just our wording on the parking. And I think that we addressed that at the Plan Commission meeting, or at least attempted to. But anyway, that's kind of, that's where things are at. That's, go ahead.
I'm Rick Stalley with Keller Williams. And we're not here to give a pitch or presentation, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that the village might have. I will say, we got involved in this in April, in, in this building. And, you know, whatever happened in two thousand and fifteen, some of you may or may not have been on the village board, but I, I think that the benefit to the village is to allow either commercial or residential use on the second floor. And this change in the PUD gives you that option, whether you like us, want us, or accept us, or whatever the proper term is for a real estate company to come into that building. I think long-term that the, the biggest functional aspect of the PUD change is, you know, to allow either residential or commercial in a building that was always designed for mixed use. So all these other things we can work out with conditional use permits and all that other stuff, parking, we want to share our parking lot with the adjacent neighbors and, and all that stuff. So if you have any questions, we have three or four representatives of our real estate company here that'd be happy to answer any questions that any board member might have. And we thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to defer answering the questions to other people that have been before you in the past. And we just want to thank you for the opportunity on behalf of the developer, that if this PUD is successfully changed to allow mixed use on the second floor, we would love to be a community partner in Heartland and help Heartland grow as we continue to grow in, in our efforts as well. So thank you.
Well, I like the way that it's ended up, that, that it can revert back if you can't use it all, or this is quite a thing without going through a big roundabout. So that's all I feel.
We need to occupy, that's the main thing.
Again, being in the position I am, owning the establishment that I own, I'm getting feedback from a lot of people in Heartland that live here in Heartland, that live close enough to walk. I'm, I'm not opposed to Keller Williams, I think they're a great company. I think you guys presented your case very, very well. But the people of Heartland would still like to see retail or a couple different businesses go in there to draw more people to Heartland, to keep people here. That's the feedback that I'm getting from the people of Heartland.
Dave, my question to you is, in that strip mall before that was torn down and then the building was rebuilt, how much was that occupied?
Uh, there was, there were a couple of businesses in there pretty consistently. There were, I think, four spaces. You know, I mean, it was getting old and I think some of them struggled.
Right, I was just wondering.
I think there were consistently maybe half to three-quarters occupied, at least.
I think there was only one, wasn't it, Dave, that changed occupancy to one building or the two of them, but basically they didn't sit empty for?
I mean, the village ended up moving two out. One moved on their own and one business closed before we even were to the point of moving anybody. So I take that for what it's worth.
Just because that's what, talking to people, that's what they said to me, that there was a strip mall there and there was stores and places to go in there, whether they use them or not. So I was just curious how much.
And certainly, the, the proposed change doesn't eliminate that possibility, just happens that there's a tenant that would take over the whole space, and that was never something that was precluded in this. And certainly, that option exists if in the future Keller Williams decides to move out and they decide that as a business decision, they want to split that space up, there are still three or four entry doors in front of that building unless they've not been installed and they could be reinstalled to make that space divisible however it wants to be, so.
Right, and I, I do, I mean, going off of what you said, Jeff, Trusty Jansen, I agree, you know, and the way it was sold is that it was set up that there would be, it would be either, I say the word boutique only because it seems like, I mean, and it doesn't even seem that necessarily Heartland wants this, but larger stores and stuff are going to go to, there's two areas, one seven miles one way, one seven miles the other way. That's where your big, larger stores are going to go to, because those people are already there. It's a hub, there's, you know, Menards and Walmart, and then another one has Walmart, Home Depot, and a whole bunch of other things going on. Della Field in Peewakki is what I'm referring to. The biggest thing that changed to me is that for the village, would we rather have it sit with no one in it? And I'm just speaking for me, I'm not, I guess I'm pleading my own case, because I changed my mind on it. How much does it benefit the village when boom, now it's full, there's agents coming in that at least will go and benefit the other businesses around, not only just like your establishment, but the boutiques that are across the street. Maybe all of a sudden, people find out about the Playhouse, the Sitgo that's down there and all the different businesses that we have downtown. Is it going to add some life on the daily as opposed to the nightly? I don't know what the best answer is, but in asking McCormick, what changed mine is if there really is no people even ready to move in, what changed my mind was that even if we left the upstairs residential, there is nothing the village could do, not that we would want to do this, but if Keller Williams said, okay, we can't have the upstairs, we'll take both those units downstairs, because technically that's still commercial. We didn't hinder it to just retail. So for me, all of a sudden, it was like, okay, we have someone that wants to make a home here and we have no one biting on it. But you are right, ideally, Heartland would want to see two little shops that add to the nightlife or a restaurant and a, and a, you know, establishment and something like that, but.
I agree with the case that you're stating right now.
Yep.
To a couple of different people that are business owners themselves, you know, their way of thinking was, the economy is going up. It's booming. It's taking off.
Yep.
It's not going to get worse in the next four years.
Right.
If we make that available to retail stores and really put it out there that this is going to be retail now, that I think that, they said to me, I think that the businesses will come.
Right.
I think it's going to fill up quicker than we think. And then, you know, I went back to the argument Keller Williams, you know, we don't have to wait. It's going to be here now.
Right.
But they said again, we would rather wait a month, two months to try to fill them with stores.
Right.
Because they don't want to walk through downtown at night to dark.
Yeah.
To nothing.
Right, right.
And they'd rather have retail stores in those spots to walk through on a Saturday or Sunday and shop.
Right. I've heard a lot of the same thing.
And, and that's the people of Heartland that are saying that. I got elected by the people of Heartland.
Right.
So I did argue the case, but it's coming back to me that they'd rather have retail.
Right.
And residential upstairs.
If there's enough demand for retail, then a businessman will find a place. They'll put it.
Well, you know, I'm a little disappointed in what it looks like when you look at it. Because what would you put in those, an ice cream parlor or a?
I think that.
You can't put a restaurant in there, Hartland.
You could put a little, regardless of how it looks, Dick, I think there's enough biz, small businesses out there looking for spaces that, especially downtown Heartland, if they know we're trying to revitalize downtown Heartland. You know, I can see the argument of the people that live here in Heartland that, you know, they want places to shop, they want people to come to Heartland to shop in little businesses, so.
Well, originally, when that whole thing has changed, when it was first started, what, ten years ago or five, whatever it is, it was supposed to be all shops down below and living above.
Right.
And we're down to this one. But I'm just looking, is that big enough that, that's left there for shops, to get a shop in there?
Sure it is. If you look at downtown Peewakki, it's no different.
It's also my understanding from what I was told and, or what I heard, was that the apartments are already a hundred percent filled, so we would have no problem filling those apartments.
Exactly.
Anything that anybody has to live in in Heartland, I can tell you, I'm not a real estate agent, but I can read the news, I mean, and I'm living in Lake Country, that, I mean, that just, I don't care if you put a cardboard box outside and say someone can live in it, someone's going to rent it in Heartland. Right now, anyway, I mean, the market is just that.
Right.
We could really use it. And to his comment about sharing the parking, I don't see where they have any parking to share. I know Dave said the parking equations were changed, that they didn't have to follow ordinance, but even following ordinance with just six employees without the title company, I mean, we were still short sixty-one parking spaces minimum.
I think that, well, I can't speak for them. I think he was talking about our conceptual parking plan that had been talked about, that they had heard about as opposed to the lack of parking that they have too.
And that's another issue.
But there's a parking problem downtown and, and that's been the way for fifteen years we've been working on that. Because you take Palmer's or even next door to Palmer's, they don't qualify for the parking. When they're both crowded, you're parking way up by the phone station, if you want to get there.
A lot of them park over the bridge.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I mean, but, but a lot of them don't either, because I'm going down there when the, when the parking lots are full. That's why we talked about, and I agree with Mike on that, people don't know how to get down there.
Yeah, well, we're going, we're putting up new signs, aren't we?
I think we're working on it.
Yeah.
Or we're trying to.
But you bring up a good point, and that is what I've heard too by citizens.
But if they want to change, and that's, that's what we're working on, to change, so if you think you want to keep us at the store, that's up to the board.
But I will say again, it, it's commercial and the owner of the building can rent that to whomever. One store, three stores, it's up to the owner of the building. And, and the particular PUD amendment that you're considering right now really doesn't change that aspect of it.
Correct.
So the apartment that's down on the lower level, that was the one to make it handicap accessible? So they didn't have to put the elevator in, is that correct?
It, it was put in so that they didn't have to put in an elevator, to the best of my knowledge and what I've read, I was not involved in, in that process.
It's pretty small.
Put in a commercial development based on how we want to use the building, elevator is not required. So the ADA component apartment on the first floor takes, removes the elevator component out of the equation completely.
Yeah, we know. We should.
Yeah, so Ryan Hodgson with JD McCormick. Just a few points. I guess like, like Dave said, as far as using the commercial space, you know, the PUD does not restrict it in any way as far as who we choose to have as tenants. I think in the year and a half we had it on the market, you know, I never had anyone even close to what we have, offering a seven-year lease term with a potential five-year extension.
But you've had people inquire then.
I have had one person for a nail salon. That is it. One person for a nail salon offered two-thirds of what we were asking for rent. As far as the parking, we covered this in the Plan Commission meeting last week. David DeCoursey Bower mentioned the, you know, I don't know if it was the downtown revitalization plan or something that analyzed parking. The report said that there was ample parking in the downtown area. Whether or not you guys believe that or not, that's, that's up for you to decide. I think that having a parking problem in downtown Heartland is exactly what you're looking for. That means you've got this place packed and it's, it sounds like that's what you want. You know, you put in a bridge with this development to get to the municipal lot, it's got ninety parking spots in it. As of today, that, from two to six, where I was on the property, ten spots were taken. I don't think we have a parking problem during the day when this business would be running.
Again, I'm talking about what's required by ordinance.
Yeah, and the PUD changed that to say that we only had to have a hundred and thirty-three spots. So that's covered. It doesn't matter what the, the, you know, the ordinance is.
Total, a hundred and thirty-three?
Correct.
Outside or is that inside and outside?
That's total. Inside and outside.
Where the change comes in is that because there's additional units, we came up short on what we set up for parking. Because with there being six units instead of the three, we're six spots short.
Well, I included six in my calculation.
Well, I mean, and even this development the whole time has been short on parking. I believe when it was in its infancy, it was talked about, and that's why there was the bridge that was built.
I understand that as far as like retail or shopping, but I think the people that live in those apartments are due to have their two parking places. And if even with the underground, if you do one underground for each apartment, and this isn't even including handicap parking, I don't even know what the rules are for that, but the minimum outside would be a hundred and sixteen point three seven, and right now we have fifty-five.
That, that statement may be correct for non-PUD activity, but anytime you create a PUD, you're essentially creating your own requirements for density and parking and changing parking density was never on the agenda or under consideration at the last two prior Plan Commission meetings.
As I said, where I'm going off of, maybe we have copies here, I'm going off just with the village ordinances, what's in our books.
But you.
I understand, I understand, but that's what I had to go by.
And I think Mr. Coggs can explain that.
But you go, you changed that as you have a PUD, like you said, and you use the parking space in the public parking lot to generate parking, to make the, the business go. The same way with Palmer's and the one next to Palmer's.
I think what Ann is getting towards is that all of a sudden, there may be people standing in front of us, and I'm looking at all aspects here. It's not, you know, it's not combative or anything, and I don't want anybody to get upset, this is why we sit and talk and have these meetings, where the issue comes in and it's not saying anything bad. You're right, a PUD was made, we knew the parking was light, they had to change the whole municipal law for it, so to speak. But I do understand where other people that own businesses in Heartland where they're forced to have a certain amount of parking are like, oh, they come in and they get to only have one point six parking spots per whatever, but we're forced to have this to the point where we could get in trouble without it. So I can understand where they get, you know, they get irritated or feel like they're special treatment and things like that. I do agree, I mean, it's great that we have a parking problem, it means people are here. At the same time, you know, as a board, we do have to think about what we're going to run into, because all of a sudden, if you have people that are parking in a parking lot and, you know, they can't park and they live there, I know if I live, I'm going to come in front of my village board and be like, there's people saying they work for Keller Williams and they don't even live there, they're just taking that spot and walking down to Zesty, you know, it could happen. We, unfortunately, when it gets to this level, you got to think of all the things that are going to come up, so I think that's just some of what we're trying to gear up and be ready for. And with the bridge being built, it is easier to get there. I think that, I think I can, most of the people on this board and most of the staff are, I mean, we're trying to do what is best for Heartland and at the same time make people happy. This project, I'll come out and say it as a resident who, during the time of this project, in the middle of it, became an elected official, it's a tough project because the goalposts keep moving and they, and they really do. And I'm just saying, speaking and representing Heartland and speaking as a resident, what started off as one thing and Mr. Landwehr, Trusty Landwehr just said, it starts off as all, you know, stores downstairs and then apartments upstairs. what started off as one thing and Mr. Landweir, Trustee Landweir, just said, it starts off as all, you know, stores downstairs and then apartments upstairs. Things just keep, the pieces keep on moving, and I can understand from the public, they're like, when does it end? Because the pieces are still moving now. But unfortunately, it's still before the board and we still have a very well-renowned business that wants to become part of Heartland. And for myself, with the amount of statements have been said and I'm counting on it and hoping for it, I think it'll be good for Heartland. But the amount that you guys want Keller Williams wants to get involved in the community, I am excited to see that. I have, in my, in previous jobs, have worked with them. I know the amount that the organization puts into communities that it's in down in, down south, Murfreesboro, certain different areas. I hope that they give back and I trust that they will. I think that it'll be good for Heartland because we're with the situation we have right now. And now that's just me. That's not swaying the board. It's just that's why my mind has changed some because I would like to see the building get filled.
Quick question, aren't they already a resident of Heartland? Don't they already have an office here?
Very small.
But they already are a resident who was in-
They have office at the Heartland Station building, correct.
Okay, okay.
Yes. And they have been here and according to what they've said, they want to stay here. They gave some presentations to the Plan Commission. They want to-
But I just want people to know that they already are a current-
Yes, they are a current business that wants to expand in Heartland, and that's another thing that has kind of swayed me is it's someone that's here, not just someone that's coming to say, oh, Heartland's growing, I want to be part of it. It is a business that already was willing to be here and now wants to be here, and I think that, to me, that speaks volumes because I do care about the community and the people that are already here.
I'm gonna comment.
I'm sorry.
I only just have one thing to say about the resident part, is that also most of the principals, we all live in Heartland. So it isn't like some companies coming in that's now also a local resident?
Right, right, right. Yes.
I think about two or three meetings ago, or our discussions is, I guess, I want, you know, those businesses, I want those little businesses in there. And, because that's what I was actually, we talked about. But, you know, just listening to what's going on here is, we want commercial businesses in there. You guys are commercial. And if we're sitting up here trying to say, we don't want this type of commercial, I'd rather have fancy little store that sells pictures, and I want a fancy little store that sells ice cream, which I could go for. You know, I don't want to, I don't think our position is to say, what stores go in those buildings? We want a commercial building. And, you know, as I hear this, it's, I'm just, this is being a commercial business. And we are putting a commercial business in there, which was the goal originally. And I keep thinking, well, maybe it's because my thought process was different than a commercial business like you are, was my comp and, you know, thought process of what type of commercial businesses I want in there. And if you, if I had a building, and if I had a building that has developed as much as you have, and if I don't have but one person asking for it, I got one or two things. I'm a terrible builder, I got too high a rent, or the place doesn't, isn't attractive. But if I had a customer that wants to do it, and it's a commercial, I can't see how we could say no.
That's difficult.
I have a question. Taking, we all agreed on the commercial on the first floor, not whether it's real estate or retail, whatever. But aren't we voting tonight on whether the second floor is going to be changed from apartments to commercial or apartment?
Well, they are not, expand it a little bit, yes, but we're not voting on either or. Keller Williams, the company Keller Williams in Heartland, which is already a local business.
Right.
Has gone to J.D. McCormick and said, can we, and come to the village and said, can we find out if we can make it all commercial? We want to expand our business where not only is it going to be real estate agents that's going to be here, there will be a small office that will be used for the title company, which is probably one or two people. And also, they want to make it a training center. So that upstairs area, they might have 30 agents come in and, and to- add to that one thing that I think will be good is, if you have 30 agents here, and they're here for six hours of training, and they train for three hours, we don't have enough people here for people to offer lunch. Not many. A lot of places don't. What changed my mind is, maybe we're opening that door where we actually are bringing people in. Maybe these people that come are going to go to their respective communities and be like, let's go to Palmer's for dinner. Let's go to Hoggers and have a drink. Let's go to the boutique that I saw across the store. It's open on Saturday from 12 to 4. What we need is the advertising, and it really changed my mind when I'm like, all of a sudden, people are going to be here during the day. We've got the night covered. We want to build on it, but we've got it covered. You know, the bid is running Dine Shop Connect. You know, the chamber is working with businesses. Let's all work together. I just thought that maybe this is going to be an influx during the day, and these are people that, seeing this community, they're going to carry it back and be like, here, let me take you, let's go. Or they have their street dance, or they have the holiday train, it's fun, let's go. And then we'll stop at Hoggers, and then we're going to Enters, and then we'll go over to Palmer's, I mean, whatever. And then, you know, my point is, is that maybe this is going to be better for us, and that's where it kind of, my mind really changed on it.
That's what I did. I brought that argument up too because I agree with you, and I agree with Mike. Who are we to say who goes in that building?
Right, right.
It kind of puts me in a bad spot because what I think is going to be best for Heartland and what the people are telling me is going to be best for Heartland are two different things.
Right.
So do I go with the people that voted me in, or do I go with my gut feeling on what's going to be best for Heartland?
Right. For myself, I can, for myself, I can only go on based on the one, and this is for myself because I have had the same thing. People are like, no, that's ridiculous. You know, I don't, I don't, I can understand their reasoning. The one thing that I know that I'm doing is I'm getting, the beginning process of getting this TIF paid off quicker. And so in the long run, I'm going to save them money, so at least I've done that. And if they're upset with me, I know they are, but I'm just saying that's, my mind changed because I think in the long run, they'll say, this was a good thing. That's my guess. I could be wrong.
You're gonna find that by being on the board and starting out, you're not going to have 100% of everybody in favor.
Right.
I've been around a long time and I could go one way or another, but you gotta find out which it benefits the majority of the people. And then don't pull a leg and say, well, yeah, I agree with you. And then the next guy comes, I agree with you. And then they both come together, and then, well, you agree with me. So you're gonna have that though. You're gonna have to make a decision that benefits the majority of the people.
If I might add, the most important thing that we want in that vocation is something that's successful.
Right.
The best determinant of what is going to be successful is the businessman who's willing to put up and risk his money on it being successful. He's a better judge than any of us on that point.
Well, I think putting a lease together for seven years is a heck of a commitment.
They're very confident that they are going to be here.
And like I said-
Successful, which is all beneficial to the community.
I, I agree.
And if we have a deficit, then another businessman will see it and risk his money coming in here and finding a spot and doing it.
You know, that's what I did.
That's right.
But Jeff, you know, that seven-year lease, that's what I negotiated with my, for my warehouse.
Right.
Is I, why? I got a better price.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's like, hey, it's business, you know. If I came and you say I want a six-month one or a seven-year, you're gonna, hey, I can, I can work with a seven-year guy, get out of here. So, I mean, I-
But the way I look at it, it's guaranteed income for seven years.
You know, and it's, hey, you know.
It's guaranteed a spot filled for seven years. It's just that some of the people I talked to, like I said, I don't know if they're not grasping that or if they're so stuck on-
Some, just for myself, I think some people, and I know we're really getting down the discussion road, but for myself, and I can understand it. I've been on the just straight resident side where you don't have to sit up here and actually make a decision, and it changes things a little bit. And I still keep my ears open. I respect what people say. But there was, I mean, some people just were against the project as it started out. And, you know, sometimes it seems like, oh, you know, no way. If that's what they want, don't do it. There's some that are like that, and some people, I mean, they're entitled to their opinion, like, no, I really don't think that's going to be right for Heartland. I guess for myself, I just, I think in the long run, it's going to get the TIF paid off quicker, it's going to get it filled so that that, you know, that money from the TIF, that increment starts coming quicker, which means that that building is on our full tax roll as opposed to the TIF roll faster, which means all that money that's coming in in taxes is going to the Village of Heartland sooner, so it's-
Well, we want a commercial in there.
Yep.
And we got, this is a commercial.
That's the thing too. No matter what Keller Williams can move in those, but we can't do anything to stop that if someone didn't want them in there. So even if we didn't vote this through, Keller Williams can still take the whole downstairs.
Right.
And we could fill the upstairs because there's people waiting for apartments.
Well, we could, but we could.
Right. I'm just saying.
There's a chance for vacancy. I'm telling you, right now I can have seven years completely occupied, no vacancy.
Mm-hmm, right, right.
Our commitment, our lease, with the simple math works out that a seven-year lease is we're going to be paying the developer $750,000 round numbers.
Yep.
We're going to put $250,000 to $300,000 into the ground floor of the building for offices that we either keep or walk away from after seven years. And if we're as successful as our other two locations, we're going to be paying our agents, vendors, and affiliates in commissions, salaries, and income, a million dollars a month in payments. So a million dollars a month and a million dollars in capital improvements and rent over seven years. I think that's a lot better than any ice cream shop's gonna bring you down.
Understood.
We'll get you a little pool.
Okay. All right.
But I will say this, just from, just to alleviate, I went and met with the girl, the darling girl who owns the coffee shop.
Virgin Manion?
Virgin Manion. She had concerns over the parking. She was all cut up with the parking. So I stopped in, which we go to regularly, a bunch of us always go there regularly, and I said, let me just put in perspective. Tuesday morning, we will have anywhere from 40 to 50 to 60 people coming in every single Tuesday morning. She thought about it, and she went, that's my slowest day of the week. I said, I promise you, they will come filtering through here to grab their coffee, they'll come here afterwards to grab coffee, maybe a snack. Your Tuesday morning is going to become your busiest Tuesday morning. Don't worry about the parking. That's why they put the bridge in. That's why they've got all this additional parking. And she thought about it, and she went, oh, that's a win for me. So just start thinking about that.
And for the record, I cannot speak for her. And it's a wonderful business. I think, to the best of my knowledge and what she said to me, that was a totally different thing where she was concerned if she was forced into some type of agreement that was a conceptual thing that came up in 2015. It was not towards Keller Williams. It was if she was forced to give up her back of her property. But I definitely think it'll benefit those close buildings. But she just, she was not against them coming in.
Amy's sister, Amy.
Amy stopped me, introduced herself to me and said, we are so excited to have all of your agents come in shopping in our boutique. It's a gift shop right across the street from the office. I thought, there's the win. And that's what we're talking about is the influx of people who will use the services, therefore other little shops and vacancies that are in town. People are going to see value in having, you know, creating shops into town because there's going to be so much activity.
Yep, thank you. If there's anybody that has anything new to add that they have not already said, otherwise I'm going to close the public hearing. Anybody that has anything new that they want to add that has not been said yet?
I just want to add one comment, president. I mean, I get your point, Jeff, about being on the board and having to make that decision. And I know people that come at your establishment or you run into the street. I don't know how you're collecting your data. But, you know, I was a school board president. I mean, there's a big picture and then there's a myopic view. And when you're talking to people and you have to make a big-picture decision, you have to waste so much more than just, you know, retail. You know, you've got a commercial space, you've got someone wanting to do it. So I don't think you fault them for not understanding the big picture, but they really can't. Because they're not in it. They don't understand it. They don't see all the coming and the going and all the intricacies of leases and developers and telling them who can and who can't rent. So unfortunately, I get that perception that, oh, I mean, yeah, would it be nice to have retail shops there? But yet also there is a company that's coming in that's going to bring a vibrancy and, you know, we're going to come to Hoggers, we're going to go, you know, we, I had, we had something to eat, you know, at Beer Snobs before the meeting tonight. I mean, that creates the excitement and stuff, so.
Oh, I agree with you.
Yeah. So to me, it's just, yeah.
Your first time on the board.
Yeah, no, and I've been there, I've been there. But that's what I'm saying, as a board member, your perspective totally changes when now you are part of the decision-making and having to explain that to people that isn't just about this one decision. It's like, what is the whole process? What do you have to think about? And you can't talk about that in a 20-minute conversation. It has to be a very detailed conversation about, it can't just be a quick survey.
It's got to be where you sit and meet for the whole night at one of the local places where you sit down and-
Right, and you, yeah, and you, you know, you talk about the multiple things that are going on.
And have a big pretzel.
Yeah. So I appreciate that, you know.
I think maybe what Jeff brought up is a great point, that a lot of the people in town are just bent on, you know, the way this thing was put up, how fast it was. They all feel it was put up behind their back when it really wasn't, but it was kind of. So they're probably still upset from just the way it went on. And like I said, I tried to argue that point, you know, and bring the point that, you know, letting Keller Williams in to that building, you guys are already here. You're, what, 50 yards from me now? But you're right, a lot of people don't see the bigger picture. But the people, like I said, the people that voted for me, but I think I've got to do the best thing for the village, regardless of what a lot of people have said.
But the businesses that got moved, like Haye's Cafe, who I went to when she was in the old Piggly Wiggly building, and I still go to her. What does her business look like today? Is it better or worse?
Oh, it's a lot better right now.
Right. So she's moved to a different location. It didn't really harm her. We're creating another environment for another business. You know, that's going to bring business to her too because she does, you know, we order lunch from her.
Right.
You know, it's, we have people that come in, so it's all, wait, wait, I don't, I don't disagree that if the intention was for the big picture like a Delphill retail shops, but you didn't have some big developer come into town and say, I'm going to buy out five buildings and I'm going to put in there what I want. You know, you created an environment to create a commercial building, and now you have someone who's saying, we're in and we're all in. You know, and we want to be there for seven years, so.
Any other comments that have not been stated yet? So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing since there are no other public comments regarding that. And now we have Part B of this, which is the consideration of a motion to approve the planned unit development and tax incremental district agreement amendment number two.
I saw move.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the planned unit development and tax incremental district agreement amendment number two. Discussion. I am in a safer, and I'm just saying this before, and please put on the record that there was some accidents that happened with the amendment process. The village is addressing that to make sure that that doesn't happen again. That is ongoing, notwithstanding that we're voting on this PUD amendment. And if this were to be approved, this does, and correct me if I'm wrong, this takes care of all of that. To make it perfectly straightforward the way it needs to be for the village, is that?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I'm not. I want everybody to be aware, this takes care of all of it so that we can have everything, you know, correct. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
That motion is carried. Thank you. So I was shooting for an hour with this meeting, and since I didn't make it, I'm going to take a recess if the board will allow. We're going to take a five-minute recess.
I gotta get home. Barry Mason's on tomorrow.
All right. Dick, I'm going to make sure it goes past 10:30 with one more comment like that.
I'm going home now.
Uh, next we have a, uh. Okay. We're going to get back to session here. When we're done. So the next item on the agenda with the end of that recess is a consideration of a motion to adopt resolution number 62518, a resolution adopting the compliance maintenance annual report, or the CAMAR.
I moved the way approved that, uh, CAMAR.
I second.
Complaint? Report?
Did we get a second?
Yep.
We got a second. Uh, we, it's been moved and seconded to accept the compliance maintenance annual report. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Uh, next item, we have a consideration of a motion to approve an agreement with, uh, Visi Sewer, Inc. of Pewaki for 2018 sanitary sewer cleaning and televising in the estimated amount of $32,500.
I saw, yeah, okay. I'll second it.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion?
Just have a question. Isn't it, they're the only ones that ever do it. Are there other competitors?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, you can answer from there, right?
No, he can't. He needs to come to the microphone. We need to set the example.
Oh, we're kidding.
We're trying to be more parliamentarian.
There are others. Um, and in past years, we have solicited pricing from them.
How often do we do that?
Every couple of years.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, but, um, last time, we only got one person that responded to our request for, uh, bid and they were higher. And this year, Visi Sewer kept the same prices last year with no increase.
And how, when do we get the whole time? We used to take so much every year. What, what does it take us to get around?
We do a third of the system a year.
A third of the system here.
Yeah. So every three years, the system is clean.
Yeah. I just wanted to check on that.
So we, so we clean the system once every three years essentially.
Correct.
A third of it every year. And you'll notice the number went up a little bit this year. If you were really remembering last year and you were thinking back, my God, wasn't this about $4,000 less last year? It was. Because one of the things that we're doing a little bit differently here is after having evaluated some of our practices, we're increasing the amount of the system that'll get televised, otherwise, internal inspection. Televised camera, run the camera through it. So that's a little bit different. We added some distance there uh, to make sure that we were hitting our benchmarks in terms of televising and, and, uh, cleaning. So we upped those numbers a little bit.
And those were goals that were set in the Cmar, or?
Cmom.
Cmom. Report.
And to clarify for anybody that is viewing and for those in the public, it will not be televised on our station. It will simply be televised so that the people involved in it can look.
It's thrilling watching.
And, yeah.
Well, maybe we could do that. I don't know. People want to see what it looks like.
Oh, I think we're going to stay.
Oh, I don't think that.
This conversation's done.
Thank you.
You can do that because we went to, we, we went to one of those meetings one time where we had lunch when it's 30-hour emergency.
All right.
That was not the best.
Well, we decided that was not the best thing. See, the village improves on, on mistakes they make and we move forward and, uh.
We add some, we added sewer lines in the last three years.
Oh, yeah.
With the new development.
Sure.
So that chunk's getting actually bigger. A third is getting bigger every year.
Yeah. Now it's about 92,000 feet.
Is that what we got around John though?
Okay, I'll call the question.
Oh, the question's been, uh, called. Uh, I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Considerate, next item, consideration of a motion to approve appointment of David De Corsi-Bauer as the plan commission representative to the comprehensive plan corp update steering committee.
Also move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will add it. Being at the plan commission meeting, the plan commission did vote to, to appoint. He was nominated and appointed by the board. That's why it's coming to us. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is discussion related to the village board goals and comments for the 2019 village budget.
So just quickly, I just wanted to provide the board with an opportunity here at a real kind of high level. If you had things that you wanted staff to consider, uh, in the upcoming weeks and months as we get into the, into the budget, if you have those things that you want us to think about trying to accomplish or add or do, an opportunity exists right now to, to let us know that. Otherwise, we'll continue to move forward, uh, as we have in the past.
Are we trying to assimilate the move to the paramedics and the extra police?
Um, yes. Uh, paramedics are, are working, have been.
So that's already kind of pushing the budgetary.
That's in and going along. Sure. And the police department, as you saw tonight, it was Dylan's first day. So we've added the extra officer, uh, to that, to the department. We've gone up to 17. So those were added last year. Um, as part of the villages, uh, recall, the village did some, some planning, uh, about a year and a half ago. That was part of the discussion there and we've added those, uh, those pieces in.
Uh, for my point of the discussion, I guess one thing that I will say is it is my hope as we are, um, I think that you said that perfectly, Dave. We are just giving our suggestions and our kind of our hopes. I do hope we did go up last year due to the things that we had to do. We tried some new, um, there was new maintenance items, including taking care of ball fields. We went kind of some extra steps, if I'm not correct on that, last year. That was continued this year. Um, and it seems to be working very well. Uh, there's some extra steps we're taking to do things better in the village. However, I would like to see, just, like I said, this is just throwing out my two cents. Uh, I'd like to see if possible that we can scale it back a little bit, if we can drop it, you know, one or 2% to get those taxes down a little bit, if possible. It's something to shoot for. Uh, I know some items came in where we did not utilize all those funds. So we came in under budget. Some we came in a little bit over, but, uh, maybe if we work hard at it, uh, we'd be able to do that. Maybe it's not possible. I'm just saying that it's my hope for the residents and the tax base. I know that that's longstanding tradition in Heartland is keep services good, keep taxes as low as possible. Last year, the citizens and businesses that pay taxes took a pretty big hit, if you consider 6% a pretty big hit. And hopefully we can scale that back a little bit and, and, and cut back 2% on the budget since we took such a big leap forward last year. That's my hope. Uh, that's all I have.
But you know, you, you got people that have, when you say 6%, you know, basically you got, you got probably 10% coming back into the village that increases each year.
Oh, I agree.
Because there were, your, your tax rate in the village of Heartland normally hasn't gone very much in the last few years.
Last year it did though. Not the, the overall tax bill went down, but that was because the schools' tax went down.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's, the people that, some houses went up and some didn't.
Well, yeah, their valuation. Yeah. You're right. Your valuation goes up. You put on an addition. You're going to be paying someone.
All of which was debt.
Okay.
There is no, debt is going up already next year.
Yeah. Okay.
So I guess that's going to be the challenge to.
I was just throwing it in.
Yeah, I'm just letting you know that the 4.3% of debt and then we have the, that's all. I'm just letting you know that.
Yep.
The majority of that increase, that was all debt. The net new construction, that all went to the new homeowners. But yeah, the general citizen was 4.3%.
Right. It was, I was just throwing out a hope, but it doesn't mean it's possible. Thank you, Ryan. Uh, any other discussion on that?
Inspections and, uh, fee schedules. I, I don't know. I think that should be, uh, looked at.
Okay.
You know, inspection services and are we providing the, what's needed for the village?
I think that that's not a bad idea. It's good to relook at that stuff once in a while.
Is that something that possibly in-house, uh, you know, contract the way it is? I don't know. I just thought we'd take a look at it.
The other thing that it's coming to mind, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to drag the meeting out. We do have our chief, interim chief here. Um, one thing that we were addressing, uh, last year was actually, uh, uh, parking tickets. I know that's not a fun topic, but we do have a parking issue and there has been times where people are parking in not the correct spots. One thing I would like to, uh, get input from the department on is, uh, what we think about raising the tickets. Our ticket price has been the same for a very long time to the best of my knowledge. And if I'm not mistaken, it is currently 10 bucks.
Court costs are probably more than that though.
Well, it's cheap. Do you pay 10 bucks to park there? It's, it's worth it. So it's not as much a fine as it is a fee.
It is currently $10. And I think the plan was when you were talking with Chief Bagan.
Yes.
Uh, 20 to $25. Uh, as the PD polled our surrounding areas, we were extremely low compared to other, other, uh, communities.
Yeah. Okay.
You're stopping from overparking, you're parking, charging $25.
I was, yeah. So that's one thing that we can address also.
Going through stop signs is what you've got to raise.
Any other, any other discussion on the, uh, any other discussion related to the village board goals? Any other goals or comments for the 2019 village budget and that process? All right. Thank you for all the input. Uh, next we have discussion related to possible changes in the position of DPW director and other staff positions. As everyone knows, um, in the next coming days here, our DPW director will officially be retiring.
And so again here, this is just, uh, if the village board members have any specific thoughts on that, I'm trying to, we've been having some discussions internally about what we ought to do, as I said to the village board in my mess, in my notes regarding this, uh, meeting. We're always looking at what are the options for changing positions around, doing things differently? Are we doing it the right way? Should we add things, change things, whatever? Um, as we've had those conversations at a staff level, uh, we continue to look at those options. I have some ideas and I'm just trying to formulate, uh, what I might make as an official recommendation to the village board about changing that. And I wanted to take this opportunity, if the village board had any thoughts on that or those possibilities, I'd take them now. Otherwise, I'll just keep plugging along and we'll work it out with staff and I'll bring your recommendation.
I think, uh, for myself, I appreciate that you brought it up and put it on the agenda. Um, and thank you for working on it because it does put us in a spot where we're looking into that. Um, for myself, what I would like to see is kind of, uh, if staff and yourself could kind of put up an idea of what you're thinking, what direction we're thinking, pros and cons, stuff like that. And then maybe we'll be able to have a sit-down or at a, a future meeting kind of talk about that. I think there is a chance that some changes could be made, but with you being much more involved in the day-to-day, I would like to see with staff or yourself, the administrator who's ultimately responsible for DPW, you know, kind of a, you know what I'm saying, right? Some ideas, a draft of where you would like to see it go and what you think benefits the village the most, uh, because you see it on the day-to-day. You work with the people, um, on a day-to-day. Uh, I'd like to see, that's what I would like, as opposed to me, I'd be shooting from the hip. Because you see it every day. Um, and I don't know if anybody else has any input, but I do like getting the updates that you put on the agenda. I appreciate that, uh, because that way we're all, you know, it's right there.
Just one suggestion I've heard from a couple of different people, and I think so too. Maybe we can find, and I don't know if it's possible, Dave, find somebody from Heartland to lead the DVW. Because it, um, it just makes sense. If you live here, when even you're not on duty, you're driving around, you're, you're seeing things. And if you don't live here, when your time's done, you're gone.
Right.
So you're not spending, I think it's important for the DPW director or if we're going to change, somebody leading DVW, whatever, to actually live here in Heartland, have a vested interest in Heartland.
Sure.
I think it would work a lot nicer. I think that it would solve some of the issues that, that we have.
Okay.
And I think that the way it's written right now, uh, our administrator, as I said, Administrator Cox, is ultimately responsible for DPW. And I know that him hitting, doing the administrative role, that there's not time, um, to be that person that can be going out to sites and talking to workers and checking on it all the time, even though he, he does that a lot. I would like to see, hopefully, that that, uh, position is curtailed more kind of like how our, uh, kind of like how our, uh, our supervisors are now, where they're involved with the people that are doing it on the day-to-day, there's never a better way to know what's going on in the field or in a factory, to actually be at the machines than being with the people that are doing the work, getting the sentiment, what's the feeling, what's going on, how's the morale, that kind of thing, I'd like to see, if we could curtail that job description, that it's part of his deal, so you aren't having to do it, that would get to.
Yeah, I like the idea with the, with the change you've made with the departmentalizing type, you know, department, different areas, and it may be adding a, you know, making a third department, I mean, you're the, you're the guy, like Jeff said, you're the guy, if it doesn't work, we'll after you. I mean, we got, we got good personnel, you know, so we got, you know, sewer and the water, and, you know, and the other activities, and, uh, I like, you know, those are three distinct area, I mean, we've got three distinct areas out there, and, uh, I think having three experts in that area, and, uh, you know, is something that I'd like to say, like just.
And I'm sure that, and then just keep us posted.
Will do.
And then we'll readdress when you kind of have some thoughts also, cause I'm sure we'd like to hear kind of what your thoughts are.
Sure.
Moving forward. Any other discussion? Alright, the next, no it won't. These guys, the old timers are always poking at me. Uh, next we have, uh, next item is discussion related to the need and desire for a community center building and potential purchase of an existing building for that purpose, um, if no one wants to lead, I guess, uh, put your hand out if you need to, uh, well, no, I, I mean, some things are, I mean, it's, uh, we wanna find out if there's a desire in this community, and I've heard both sides of it, if there is a desire for a community center, the village has pretty much since I moved in, in two thousand and five, uh, been at least toying with the idea of looking into some form of a community center that, uh, not only, uh, makes a great place for the youth to go to, but also for people that are on that older side of things, being in retirement, where they have a place to go and, and things to do, um, we have a great rec department here in Heartland, obviously that would want to be incorporated into that, if they can use it in some way, shape, or form, but, those things cost money, and we would not want to spend any money, uh, if the village just doesn't want it, or thinks it's not a proper use of their tax money, so, anybody that is here, please pass on to your friends, anybody that's on Facebook, please post it around, and I really mean that, because I think getting the word out there, that the thought is even there, is better than it just being a closed conversation with just us, but, uh, right now, it's just open for discussion, if there's something that we can utilize, um, that isn't extremely expensive, uh, I mean, I think it's a good idea, there are quite a few people in the village that want it, there's some that I'm...
There's a good charm, cause we worked on this for over five years, a group around a community center, we had it down to the pack where we had a public hearing, we had, we almost had a spot, we had a spot all picked out, we went around the different communities, and we had a public hearing on it, and then it died, not at, but there was, about at that time, about eighty percent of the people were in favor of it.
Right.
But we ran in, running the library at the same time, and we didn't wanna throw two and a half million dollars there in this community center, it was six million.
Right.
To have what the group of, of the bunch that turned around and looked.
Well, and that's the biggest thing that we're running into, is that some people that may not went, want to spend, and when I say some people, I'm saying out in the village, may not want to spend six, but if there's a way that we can make it happen for much less, then I'll...
Well, you can, you can spend what you want, but we turned around for five years, we looked at community centers, and what they cost, how much it ran, and so on, if you wanna start over or do whatever you want, I wouldn't jump right in to buy anything, because we've done that for five years, we went to surrounding communities and asked them what they wanted, and if you wanna see a nice community center, you go to, uh, what I would not want, outside of Sun Prairie, they just beat, uh, what is it?
Deforest?
Um, Monarchy.
Monarchy, okay, alright.
And you wanna see a community center, and that's where we went around to look at, if that's what you want.
Well, it's, we're tonight, I, more than anything, I think, and I'll kind of, I'm gonna tag team, I guess, with the Administrator, because I think we put it on the agenda simply to ask, and in even trying to do things and with more communication in the village, it's been put on the agenda, to ask the village if we would even like to look into the Village Board, you know, do we wanna take that next step, and there will be a lot of steps in the process, I do understand it was already ongoing, it may be advised by the Administrator, or we may decide on the Board that there may end up being a committee to look into things, I mean, Dave, please chime in here, if there's anything that I'm missing, but it's, at this point, it's simply, there may be a possibility of something that's much less than six million dollars, does the Village Board want to look into that aspect of the community center, and the reason I'm saying that is, cause I think that's kind of what's gearing this, um, it can go wherever the Village Board wants it to go, it's not just me, am I wrong in saying what I'm saying?
That's what you gotta do, you can't, you, I don't think you can look at how much it's gonna cost, you gotta look and see what you want, and then if you wanna put it in, because if we'd have bought that community center at the same time we had the library, we'd have borrowed eight million dollars, and it would have been able to do that, but, I mean, it was expensive at that time.
Right.
But just don't buy, put a community center in because you can buy one that's cheap.
Well, and I'm not gonna buy anything, it'd be the Board voting.
No, but you're gonna live with it, if you put up a community center, no, you're gonna live with it.
Oh, absolutely.
So if you want a cheap one, you put up a cheap one.
Well, and that's...
If you want one that, that will serve the community, you gotta go around and look at what these other ones do, no, that's the only thing I'll say, you can do whatever.
Well, no, and that's why, the question tonight is, do we wanna start taking the steps, looking into it, what you guys had going, it's, it kind of hasn't been talked about in a while, that's all I wanted it on the agenda for, was to, nothing's being decided.
Did I understand you to say it's going to include a youth center, so it won't be just for our rec department, it will include a youth center?
I was just saying my ideas, it, that, nothing is...
We set, we set one out, which included, when we had this one that we set, was big enough to include both, a youth center and a senior center, and then we took the property that was left on Cottonwood Avenue, that the ice age trail goes through, and, and the river goes through, that was all set, I mean, pretty much set, and then we all just changed.
Do we put that out for vote, that go out to the citizens?
No, went out to a public hearing, went to a public hearing.
We got a lot of opposition.
I think what, I think...
Administrator Cox. Administrator Cox.
I think you've got a scenario where that, the things that happened in the past are, you gotta just, put that box away, so to speak, um, I think you may have some opportunities in the community to acquire a, a space, uh, an existing building that might have some opportunity for expansion, um, but if, it, it doesn't go anywhere unless the village is represented by the, the seven of you, wants to do that, certainly, Kelly Yogres is the Recreation Director, she's here in the room, certainly the Recreation Department is always, as you know, looking, well, you may know, looking for space, Trusty Landware sits on the park board, and certainly you hear at the park board, Kelly talk about, uh, the programming that she has, her, the, her programs continue to grow, uh, she packs our own community space, the down, the lower level of this building, all the time, and there are times when we have to move her into this room, and, uh, I think that if, if she could have six gymnasiums, she would be thrilled, because she could fill them with pickleball and eight million other activities, um, and so I think that, but six million dollars is probably not on the list right now, as I understand that that was, uh, heavily fitness oriented space, uh, and we may, we may not need that, we may have that covered in the private sector, uh, in the community.
But what I wanna think of when we looked at these places, this place was eighty percent without a swimming pool or, or, uh, water to it, that was eighty percent in Monarchy, that, that went eighty to eighty-five percent self-supported, by groups of people using the gym, and adults renting space, and they jog around the track, and, I mean, so that's why I said, I don't care whether you wanna start over or anything else, but don't jump to something because you buy something cheap.
No, we're not, we're just opening the door of, do we wanna look into a community center again?
That's...
That's the question, no, that's really the question, the old, that time when it got killed, it kind of died, now we're in a position where maybe it goes one way, maybe it goes another way, we're not even deciding that tonight.
You know, when that died, we had a room full of people there, and I talked about, at least twenty of them thought they came down to vote against the library.
Right.
And we turned around and said, the library's all in and all up, and, and that's by running a community center at the same time, that was too much.
Right.
But I'm just saying, if you wanna start over, start over, because I'll be long gone, but, uh...
No, it's not, and it, it's not a slight, it's not starting over, no, I'm just saying, out of respect for you, it's not starting over, all the documents and the stuff that you guys had, uh, what I am saying is that that did kind of die, so this is, let's call it a resurrection then, but it's not just starting from that committee with completely different people that were elected.
It's gonna take you five or six years to do that, cause it was set for a rec room, a, a senior citizen and a youth center, you could have put the thing all together, I mean, we were right, right to the stage where we almost had it, where we could pass, and I forget Ryan told me, what's a million dollars cost on, for, for your tax rate, I mean, you had, you told me that one time.
A lot.
But if there's a possibility, we could purchase an existing building, possibly renovate it, to what our specific needs are, and do it for...
Well, if it's...
Not doing like a YMCA, but doing more of a community that would fit into, so not a huge...
Right.
Well, you've gotta, you've gotta check that, and if you're talking about, if you're talking about that church property, then you fit a, and then you buy that property and you fit a, a building into it, you don't get a, a, a center, and then build it and then put it out, you've got the land right there, it fits in there, where it fits in there, that's what you end up with.
That's what I'm saying, and that's where as a committee that'll be deciding, you know, if we do end up, however, whatever, do we want to look into the idea of a community center, that's what the real question is tonight, there's a, the details come after that, because I'm going to throw out, things that will come up with this, we'll even be looking into studies and stuff like that, where we will be leaning heavily on the Administrator, because there are things that'll have to be proportioned for bids and studies, am I correct on that?
Sure.
Because we couldn't do anything without knowing, you know, this, that, or the other. This is real high airplane view, we're not even close to the landing strip yet, this is just looking down, like, do we even wanna go to that airport, you know, we're up at thirty thousand.
You've gotta get this group sitting at this table wanting to put it in, and that's what we've did, and then like I said, we worked on that over five years, and we were almost set.
Right.
And then it, it...
I know, it went on and on and on, and then it died.
If you start this over again, or whatever, no, I...
Right, does this Board want to look into, even though we know it's been worked on before, and it almost was at that point, does this Board want to look into the possibility of a community center, find out the public input and see what they think of it, and maybe even include, uh, properties that may come up, uh, in the village, that, uh, save us money in utilizing, or in attaining that goal, if we decide to move that far forward?
Cause we even had a survey, what they said on a survey, that's how close this thing was, there was a survey.
No, I, right, right, it was just, it was so many years ago, we have to start over.
You're just asking now if there's any interest.
Yep.
We're not, we're not building anything, we're not doing anything, it says there's interest in the Board, not what we've done in the past, it's just, are we interested in this?
Are we doing a vote on this?
Trusty, Trusty Swenson.
Well, what I wanna do is say, if you're starting over, that's fine.
Are we doing a motion on this, are we voting to, there's an interest, or how are we doing this to move on?
We can just take a consensus vote, because at that point then we will talk on...
Yes.
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 Are there any mazes?
Well, I've been at this thing for ten years, I wouldn't say so.
We'll start looking into it, uh, we've had in the past some, some, uh, funds that we've allocated out of the village's budget, that we never have used to, to look at some of that professionally, we can do that, I'll remind you of course, that you're, we're in the, uh, beginnings of, of, at risk of, uh, trusty, uh, landware reminding us all of the other one, uh, we're in the, in the big, about to start surveying the community related to the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan update, uh, and the village's Comprehensive Development Plan update, so we can maybe glean some information out of that as well, uh, as we move forward, so certainly we'll start looking at that, um, maybe we try to do some of the list, at least some initial work, uh, quickly, because as I meant, as alluded to, there are some possibilities in the village that, uh, might arise, and we'll see how that works.
One quick question.
Sure.
Are we allowed to mention any properties that maybe we would be looking at?
That is the Administrator's, although I do not know...
Certainly there's nothing that says you can't mention spaces, you can if you want.
Okay.
One thing, um, this, I swear this is the last statement on this, but, one thing that I'm thinking of, thinking ahead that we didn't have back when they did the original survey, is I guess, I think it would be helpful, if, if it's even possible, if staff could look into whether or not using something, and I don't even know if this is used, I haven't used it in a while, but, like Survey Monkey, stuff like that, where you don't have to do the mailings, but people can go on, I don't even know if that's possible, but if maybe we do a survey...
The survey will be online.
Oh, okay, great.
The Comprehensive Plan Survey, that all, that is online, or paper, depending on...
Or if we do a survey for, uh, the community center.
We can, and actually, it is Survey Monkey.
Oh, okay, perfect, perfect, so, uh, no, I just, these, I, I think it'd be good if the staff looks into it, and then come back to us with what are those initial steps of even looking into it, so, um, alright, so we've got, uh, yeses in moving forward to look into a, a community center, I think that that's a good, uh, step to take, next item on the agenda...
One more thing on there, just then I'll quit, but, when you take out a survey and what you want, you gotta have a survey that tells what the people want, is it gonna cost you four million, two million, or we're gonna put on two, you can't survey, and the guy comes in and says, well, how much is it gonna cost, well, we don't know yet, we wanna, we wanna get, you know, you're, you're starting over again, which is fine, I'm not against the thing, but I mean, to start a survey out and before you even know what you want or what anybody wants, we did that.
Alright, alright. Uh, next item on the agenda, we have discussion related to a policy to allow signs or banners to be hung across streets in downtown.
That used to be really a popular thing, man, you come into town, you'd see it, and it was pretty impressive.
No, I understand somebody got hurt, years ago...
That was a while ago with the ladder that they had, now they have that basket.
But now we've got a basket truck to do it, so there shouldn't be any issues with any injuries, so...
She seems fine with all of it.
I think we should, yeah, I think it'd be great.
But as to Dave saying, we have to figure out where we can hang it across from, and I looked, and boy, there's a lot of wires around there.
Yeah.
There are.
Well, there's a couple of things that come into play, number one, there's liability stuff, um, there also is, and I'm just throwing this out there, uh, you know, when we come to hanging these signs, and I know a lot of times, and including myself, it's like, hey, DPW can hang them, however, when you include, just keeping the thought there, I think it's always good to look at DPW, and if that's a cheaper avenue, fine, or, you know, if subcontracted, if a sign can be hung for a hundred and fifty bucks, and it, no, nothing mean to any subcontractors, if it can be subcontracted out, and the bill is a hundred and fifty bucks to hang a sign, and if the guy falls out, it still costs us a hundred and fifty bucks, doesn't cost us a hundred and fifty bucks if it's DPW or a fireman, or, not that firefighters would, but anybody in the village employee that falls out, that's no a hundred and fifty bucks, so I'm just saying that's one thing to keep in mind for anybody even thinking about the signs, I'm not opposed to it, I just think we have to, uh, look into the liabilities of it, not so much someone falling, I'm thinking more of just, we gotta make sure the right of way is kept open, and that there's strict guidelines on when they go up, when they come down, and that they keep on looking pristine, um, so...
There definitely has to be a timeline of when they go up and when they come down, and also getting a, um, actual permit for...
Mm-hmm, yep, absolutely.
To have that sign before an event.
Right.
You know, but it's, you know, with the, we energy, you know, for them to let us even use a, use their pole, it's not, it's not gonna be good, and I'm just wondering, cause I think that's an ideal location, but is that the best location in the village? And I'm wondering if it would be better for us to put a, make a place where we could put a sign, in a different air, you know, maybe it's a little closer to downtown, you know, where we put up a couple poles of our own, that we could put up a place that sign, make it easier for us.
And that, we may do that down the road, right now we're just at, do you wanna even venture into the area of allowing, or do we want to, are we against hanging banners across the street for events?
Yes.
No, but I'm just saying, cause all those details...
Yes.
Yep. So.
Yes.
That would be a major change in municipal court. Is that correct?
Take another survey.
Is that, that would be a change, because I personally think that I would want to vote to direct staff to look into what needs to be done with that also, even though I know that's a lot putting on staff, but there's stuff.
You referenced the village code, and yeah, we should, we should certainly make sure that the village code provides for that. I think you're, all of the things you've talked about, the safety of the installation, whether we energies will allow us to attach to their facilities, uh, policies related to how the permitting happens, all of those things. I think you're right. I think that, I think we get into that. We need to develop that in, information for the, for the village board in the future. As to Trusty Myers' comment about should we do it in a different location, I know that when the bid has talked about this in the past, very informally, just really not much more than a couple of members trying to talk about it. They were starting to look at, is there an option that is on our own facilities, whether that was, I'll call it flag poles or something like that.
Right, right.
Uh, certainly, there's some desire to that from administrator's perspective, because everybody's feet stay on the ground.
Yes.
And anytime you're off the ground, you know, there's an element of risk there.
Aluminum, aluminum poles last a long time.
So if you'd like us to, we certainly can start looking at.
Right.
I think that's a good idea, running it up like a flag on, on both ends and.
Well, then why don't we, uh, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we, even though it was on the, as discussion, I'm going to make a motion that we direct staff to find out what the options are. Uh, and then kind of get back to us, say, not in the next meeting, but two meetings from now, would that be enough time? Or is there too much going on where we might need to push that out a little bit more than that?
You're talking about the end of July, essentially?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get you an update by then, sure.
Yeah, just to, yeah, whatever you have, just to let us know. You might come back and say, you know what, this, there's just no way to work this, you know what I mean? But I would, I'll make that motion to direct staff to, uh, kind of look into it and they'll report back to us on what possibilities, what locations, stuff like that.
Could put the evergreens across the road like they used to two or three years back.
Well, the idea of directing, the reason I'm making the motion is because I think that it sounds like the, everybody's in agreement on it, so it will already start the process. Otherwise, we're going to, and I think that the administrator would agree with me, we're going to lose a month to come back to this. This directs them to already start looking at locations, but the, because it's a public meeting, the chamber and the bid can contact the administrator and say, here's some of the things we're thinking of, and he can come back to us, and then after that, if everybody voted on it, then we would be rolling and moving towards that to some capacity.
So I second your motion to let staff look into the flag poles.
Back to us in a month. It's been moved and seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed. That motion is carried. With that, we move into announcements. And we only have eight minutes, seven minutes to do it, otherwise it'll be a two-hour meeting and I'm going to get in trouble. I'm kidding.
Hometown Celebration is, of course, this weekend, Friday night is the fireworks, uh, Saturday morning, oh, fireworks, I should also mention crafters, food, beverages, bands, all sorts of fun in Nixon Park, beer, of course, uh, all sorts of fun in Nixon Park on, uh, Friday night. Saturday morning, the excitement continues for those of you who want to do a little five K run and I'll watch you go by. That's an option for you. I know that the, uh, there will be bands again Saturday night, uh, in the, in Nixon Park. Sa- Sunday, rather, we wrap up with the parade, uh, the usual step off, one thirty, right, Kelly, one thirty? Usual route, uh, and then, uh, activities, of course, the beer garden is open back at the, uh, at Nixon Park, so.
In case you haven't had enough for the whole.
That's right, in case you haven't had enough. He has big pretzels, food, so. Uh, but basically hometown celebration, come down and have fun with us for the weekend.
Uh, street dance is coming. That's been hit in Facebook. I believe that's July twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Twenty-first. Any other announcements at this time? Oh, our prayers and thoughts are with our former chief Bagan, uh, and his good health. Say a prayer for him. He had a health issue, so I'm just saying, say a prayer for him. He still accepts thoughts and prayers, even though not everybody wants thoughts and prayers around the country, he does.
Could all use a few.
Oh, yes, I need more than many. I'm sitting right here in the fireplace. Then moved on second that we adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned. It'll last in two hours.